Question carrying. Uh second. Three, two, seven, five, Erie Boulevard. This is Shake Shack. Two decisions here. First decision. Approval of an area variance thirteen parking spaces for a total of forty-nine parking spaces. Where the code requires sixty-two parking spaces.
Motion approved.
Option by Jamie, just barely got it, only a second by Max. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Motion's carried. Last but not least, same applicant Shake Shack three, two, seven, five, your Boulevard. This is a resolution approving an area there to twenty feet for the zero lot line landscape buffer.
Make question.
Kelly, second, second. Josh. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Staying? Motion's carried. As far as administrative matters. Alana, we're getting to the end of the year here. It's already September of twenty twenty-five. Curious about. Members doing continuing education.
How many people still have another four hours?
Permanent state.
I'll do it.
Classes, that might be this way.
I'll do it. I just had to do my.
Great.
My attorney went first, so. With that completed, I can move on to your CLEs. For my faulty position.
I know. I just wanted to mention, I'll probably mention that at every meeting before the end of the year. I, since Alana came on, I was. She reminded me how important that is and I should be reminded of that first more often and that every year member needs a four hours. Uh, once this clock ticks to six thirty-five, we're gonna start, okay?
Makes you wanna like that some C L E party. They'll just, you know, we'll show them up on the screen.
We should do that. That's how we kind of finish it with the class, right? In the past.
That's more.
Yeah.
About snacks. Little little baby music.
How we go around.
Um, is there anyone who has an interest in this?
Do you agree to waive reading of the notice?
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, guys, welcome back.
Hi, thanks for remembering us. We're here in, uh, July. Uh, I'm Steph Merchant. This is Mackenzie, my fiance, and, um, today. We are.
Is this the one you want?
This is, uh, no, uh, no.
This?
No.
And not this?
No, that was last time.
Oh.
Well, I do have the drawings, just on paper copy, but I did, I emailed them to Sharon. Um.
I think that's all.
That's in this. The. Word page, I think.
Oh.
As I recall from last time, we worked out some solution, but now it doesn't work. Certain news tells what doesn't work about what we tried to do last time.
Uh, okay, so last time, um, you said that we could have a parking area, um, onto our existing driveway.
I'm sorry, I don't have that when you're, when you're asking me about.
That's okay. Can I, can I pass around the paper copy?
Yes, absolutely. And I can even make copies for the reaction. I think I'll make some copies.
This is what we heard last time about that got denied. Um. Alright, so we got. I mean, this is just the general drawing, and then these are just with cars for reference.
Why, you, you explain what it is trying to do.
So, um, we're trying to add a parking area onto our existing driveway, and last time that was established at seventeen and three-quarter feet. Um, total width, so that would be adding. Um, let me see, thirteen, that would be adding four and three-quarter feet to the width. And then you said that that could come eighteen feet. Down the length here.
Yes.
Um, and then a hard stop.
Yeah.
And, uh, that was established that, um, there was no access into that space. Without driving over the edge of the driveway and onto the grass, and also that width didn't allow for a car to come in and out of the garage.
Okay, so that's scrapped. What would you like to do is that you wanna actually widen the whole thing in the bottom?
No, we'd, uh, we'd like to just ask for a variance for, um. Adding on to that seventeen and three-quarters, we'd like to bring that just to nineteen feet, eight inches. So we'd ask for a one foot eleven inch variance. And we'd also like to bring the length from eighteen to twenty feet. Because, um, without that. Basically, we're giving up some width, um, not going to the full width that we'd like, and we need that extra length to get around the car that would be parked in front of the garage.
I got you, but the curb cut's gonna stay the same.
That's right.
Alright, and for a certain way up the driveway, it's, it doesn't change?
Uh, that's, that's correct, for fifteen feet. And then we'd have kind of a gradual curve, you know, from that thirteen to that nineteen feet eight. As an access into that parking area.
Got it. And then if we do this, one car can back out of the garage.
Exactly. It's the spin. And I apologize, I, uh, I'm not sure how this didn't get through.
That's okay. It happens.
Of course, she's not here tonight.
Does anyone have any questions?
Hey, should wait for the drawing, see, just look at it for. In context of what we spoke about last time.
Oh, yeah.
Here's that first. They want six point eight by thirty-five, and then they want nine point eight on what?
So nine point eight is allowed by right, excuse me, to ten?
So they have a single car garage, so they have ten. They want nineteen point eight, if I'm understanding their application correctly, nineteen point eight curb cut?
Uh, no, we were gonna keep it at thirteen.
Um, the existing driveway with is already it's thirteen feet.
There you go, so. Their existing cut is thirteen.
So the Sharon told me because. Um, basically because it was, you said I didn't need to fill out new paperwork, basically.
Because you already applied for that.
Yeah, yeah, even though we were changing the plan.
Was there three different dimensions? No, two are the same.
Yeah, okay.
Um, yeah, so.
One had more dimensions on it than.
So two, the two with the cars are slightly different. One just shows one car centered on the garage and just explaining how we would need that.
Put something three foot two, put something.
If you put the cut to.
No, no, they're all different. Uh, yeah, there's a three foot five, a two foot.
That, that basically just showing the space between the cars and the space between the edge of the driveway and.
A one foot eight.
And one has the car centered on the garage door.
And that's if I. So that's the one with the three foot five dimension, is that right?
That's right.
Okay. You know, they're slightly different.
If you have a true parking area you're looking for, six point eight by thirty-five feet, is that currently what you're looking for?
Um, no, it's, uh, six point eight by twenty feet. And then. Um, yeah, and then we're looking for.
Fifteen feet is the curb.
Exactly.
Transition.
I would say is access to the parking area, it's not an extra parking space and.
So it's a twenty foot by six foot eight plus the swing in. Which is fifteen by six foot eight roughly. Which is the transition.
Allowed twelve by eighteen. By code.
Right.
Two hundred something square feet are allowed. Are they requesting something smaller than what the code is, than what the code says? If that's the case, they don't, I don't think they need. A variance.
Is there a set distance, oh, it stops, it starts? Yeah, after the property line, so.
Variance for the property line, right?
The one foot, yeah, the one foot eleven inch. In front upon the.
The variance, just the property line part and the curb cut part?
Yeah, they're down to six feet.
So it's just the foot.
It's just, it's just the neighboring property.
So they want one variance.
Well, I'm just, just for clarification, I wasn't sure. Um, I, I know in the code it says.
Well, it sounds like we haven't been clear with you, sir, so I, I want, just trying to clarify what you're asking for, so this board can.
Okay.
Can decide. If this is correct, what you've just given us, this is what you're requesting, correct?
So what does it say? So it's.
Well, that's the old one, right?
Uh, this is, yeah, from the original application, um.
So that doesn't have any updates to it?
Certain type.
They want to go from ten to two feet on the curb cut. They're already thirteen feet. No, there's no.
This, is this?
No, because.
Just this line here, we didn't fill that in, right? This is, I filled these two in, and this is.
I think it's just the one.
Yeah.
She wrote that.
That's not my idea.
Okay, sorry. So we didn't realize that Sharon had filled in this line and crossed that up. So, yes, we believe. We believe that is, yes.
Sharon told me this was the updated one.
I believe so, sorry. She didn't tell me that she.
It's okay to say it's okay. So that's why I was confused, so.
Yeah, I apologize to.
My understanding was that you, you're going for a nineteen point eight foot total curb cut at the street. If that's not true, then we don't have to do, we don't have to do that. That make sense?
Cause they're not doing that.
If they're not doing that.
I think that curb's kinda.
Doesn't indicate that.
Are you, are you revating that portion though? The improved parking area.
Yeah, but the improved parking area, that's six feet eight inches by thirty-five.
That's bigger than what.
Uh, no, six feet eight inches by fif- uh, by twenty, and then that fifteen would be the, was the access that curving part.
It was the piece that was there.
Yeah.
Okay, this part is eight.
Exactly, and from, so from.
So the whole thing is thirty-five feet from that.
Uh, well, this, 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 um, the parking area, it's just this is the parking area, this would mean access to the parking area.
I think access to the parking area was so good, parking area.
No, we wouldn't be parking and we wouldn't be able to fit a car, it would just be getting around the car that would be parked here.
But then you're widening your driveway if you're not, if that's not parking area, then the driveway's widening.
Tell me.
So the. Cars are thirty-three roughly square feet for the base area. No, I'll just.
We could maybe give a variance, one, hey, you're way away from your neighbor. I don't know, that's right, then, so let's do that. If we go into this interview, you mentioned, I don't know that.
Isn't it six feet away, is that over though? It is.
Yeah.
So only about eight, eight foot to six foot, so two foot variance, right?
And driveways.
One foot eleven, yes.
Okay.
Driveways shall maintain a uniform width extending directly from the curb cut radius into the lot and toward the garage parking area and only widening to the width of the garage. Door or to a parking area within twenty feet of the door.
Which is what we're asking.
Yes, once you're past twenty feet, then.
So.
That's your variance.
Yes, we could, we could.
If you're counting this as driveway and not parking area.
Or we could just rent the variance for that.
I would, I would argue it's neither, just because the only reason we're putting it there is so we don't drive over the edge of the driveway, we're not gonna be. Stationing a car there, it's just an access point.
But it's a paved area, so it's either a parking area or a driveway.
Okay.
Caving it.
Um.
Right, that's.
How close to the tree will that?
Totally confused.
Oh, what tree?
There's like a tree line, right?
Uh, we took those down, they're not there anymore. If you're looking at Google.
Oh, yeah.
Trees, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, so it's a variance on, uh, C D four. The distance, that variance on the C five, we wanted to omit the squiggly portion right here, because it's twenty feet. And it comes down to fifteen feet.
Well, okay, actually, I'd like to amend that because it says driveway shall maintain a uniform width extending directly blah, 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 toward the garage. And only widening to the width of a garage door.
Or the parking area, which is.
Within twenty feet.
Which is what we're asking.
Thirty-five.
Yeah.
So that would be a variance, that one.
So then two. This is so.
A carve out, cause of area.
Yeah, cause it starts widening further than twenty feet.
Because it's.
It's a fifteen.
Right. It's one.
Wants to widen the driveway fifteen feet closer to the road than the code.
Right.
This is really concerning. I think it's slippery though, because when we did this in July, we. Worked through a solution that gave them the maximum allowable area within the code. And now.
But didn't give us what we wanted.
Excuse me, sir. So. I understand, but to Alana's point, I mean, we're kind of flirting with. I think we're getting further and further away from what the code specifies. If you're not allowed to have a two, a, a double car wide driveway, if you have a single stall garage. We're effectively going around that by allowing them a parking area in addition to the width of the driveway. And then, in addition to that, giving them a variance to allow them to access it. Is essentially giving them what the code says we're not supposed to give, a double Y driveway for a single star curb, still stall, correct?
With all due respect, it's the parking area, it's not the driveway. And the parking area is a separate, yeah, stipulation in the code here, they're, they're separate items, so.
Improved parking area.
Yes. So the parking area is attached to the driveway.
Yeah, I. I don't think that's what the code really means there, because if. We have a condition that explains where you, where and when you're allowed to widen with the driveway. I, my assumption, yeah, spirit of intent of having that allowed parking area isn't typically essential to double with parking area. Or sorry, the driveway, it's allowed maybe for a turnaround or for, you know, a perpendicular size spot. We went through this when we looked at that one in Jamesville. I mean, I mean, I can, I can, as a resident, I would want the same thing. I'm just saying that by doing these things in succession. We're effectively doing what the code says we're not supposed to do. Which is allowing them to widen out to a double stall garage for one call, yeah.
The zoning board had been doing that with driveways since, since they've been coming there, we've been doing it.
With all due respect, driveway shall maintain a uniform width extending directly from the curb cut thirteen feet, which it does all the way up the property to the edge of the driveway. And toward a garage or parking lot area, which is only widening to the width of the garage door to a parking area within twenty feet of the door. So the parking area is a separate entity from the driveway.
Is, I mean, so you're, you're reading, um, subsection seven, one of them.
Five?
Seven.
Seven's the one about that defines the park, the turn, turnout, parking area or turnout.
One improved parking area on the side yard side of the garage, so you get a driveway and you get a turnout area, driveway, turnout area.
Yeah, if you're on a main road.
Turnout area can be a certain size. Driveway can be with, uniform width, and then it turns out to the.
It's arguable that's a turnout.
Parking area.
That's what I mean, as I don't think it's really.
Says improved parking area or turnout.
Yeah.
So it's or, you can have one or the other. It is large, what he's asking for, it's almost twice. The permissible length in the code.
It's about twenty-two square feet larger.
It's about eighteen feet long, but twelve is the, if you call that. Well, it's not, if, if their entire thirteen foot driveway is grandfathered, be, all the way to the width of the garage, then if the variance we're giving is just for the width of this. Improved parking area.
Right.
Of six point six feet, six feet eight inches. In total, the actual improved area is less than what our code allows. So a twelve by eighteen foot improved parking area is a total of two hundred sixteen square feet.
They're a hundred ninety-four.
If they're. If we're not considering the already existing thirteen foot wide driveway and the improved area that we're adding is only six point. Six feet inches, inches, times twenty is a hundred thirty-three square feet. Plus a triangle, it's actually less than what would be a triangle, is an additional fifty square feet, which totals a hundred eighty-three square feet. So area wise, we are underneath what the code allows in terms of approved car. So I'm not, I'm not against it based on the area, it's just, again, I. I don't know, we, we see these so often and I just fear that this is sort of working towards precedent where anybody can widen the driveway.
Again, I feel like we agreed on something in the previous meeting and, um, I feel like you're just contradicting that decision.
I usually, I usually feel for these things from a safety perspective, and I would rather have people with a parking area than car drawing in the streets and.
So this is superior design to the double?
Uh, I would, yeah, I would, I would think this is safer than denying it and having them. Move cars in and out of the driveway in the street.
The consequence of not granting it is they drive across it and, and there's no lawn there that carries the lawn and there's some service that I think.
Without it.
Yeah, most of the, we got it, so it's the consequence, reality of it. We're not contradicting ourselves at the last meeting. We worked through a solution. That allowed you to do what we were doing because this is a gray area and it's tricky to navigate, so we established a solution. That we understood to be mutually beneficial and that it didn't require a variance. So now that we do need a variance. This is why we have to discuss it, because it's tricky, we're not contradicting ourselves.
That's fine.
I just, I think this is just tricky. I live in the Dewittshire neighborhood where ninety percent of the driveways are a single car width. And everybody has a single start, single stall garage, most people. And with, we just started establishing precedent, we are effectively. You know, whether or not it's, you know, allowable, if we, you know, work through it as if, you know, as he's describing.
We don't have an HSA where we live.
So that has nothing to do with that.
Oh, it's not Dewittshire.
That's right. No, no, I'm saying that I, I'm just.
Where you do live, you have an HSA, you told us in class.
H O A?
I'm sorry, H O A.
That's, that's not true.
Okay.
Not true.
There's no H O A there?
Oh, please don't.
No, no.
Which I. Okay.
I don't know.
Good question, question.
Oh, sorry, go ahead. Can you just tell us, um, your name?
My name is Ethan Rice. Um, I'm the property owner right next to them, their driveway will run up to our property. And I'm in full support of them widening their driveway, because mine is twenty-one foot wide. It's been like that, I've been there for thirty-six years. Their driveway has never been improved. I, I guarantee that it was the first driveway ever put in there. The house has been seventy-five years old. The driveways that are there for the single car driveways are pretty much obsolete with today's. Drivers. Every person in the house that drivers, has the driver's license, has a car pretty much. Their driveway is the smallest and skinniest on the block. There are other driveways that are double wide, one at the corner, one hundred Andrews Road, that does not have a garage. One oh eight has no garage and they have a carport, they have a double wide garage or double wide driveway. One ten has a double wide driveway and if we could pull it up on the satellite maps, we could show you and you, get a better view of what this is all about. If you pull up, yeah.
I'm not the best at this, but I do hear you. Let me see if I can get into this here.
I'm not, I'm, I'm not as concerned about this case as I am. Us having a better solution for working through these in the future, if it's a revision.
I think there's a lot to talk about this zoning board and driveways generally.
Well, that's my point, is that.
In this particular case, you know, no neigh, we have no neighbors here that have any issue with this.
Well, they've all supported it.
Right. It's very serious, so I usually want on precedent. No, I'm, I'm, and yeah, I, I'm, in this particular case, I, I'm in favor of this one, it's more about just what this means for the future.
Well, it's some, I mean, I guess we're gonna pull them up, but it's, if, if it's the care of the neighborhood, I think.
This is why I direct with, it looks like this one.
And I, yeah, there's a bunch. Is this your house?
It, that's my house, yeah.
If I, if I could point out.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. I'll try and go where you're going.
This is my driveway, double wide driveway, been there since we moved in. This is their driveway here. If you go down the street, if you go up to the corner. Uh, if you, all the way to the corner. Alright, they have a double wide driveway, no garage. If you come down to the next one. One oh eight has a carport, it's not a garage, they have a double wide driveway. One ten has a double wide driveway, they have a single car garage, their driveway is extended. One, one twelve and one fourteen have.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Oh, no, one second.
Okay. Uh.
There, that's.
So, my, my driveway is double wide, here is their driveway. And I would also argue for them, that there's a manhole cover right here on the end of their driveway. So it effectively reduces the size of their entrance and exit already. It's covered and with dirt and stone right now. If you go down the street. Single car. Single car. Single car lane, parking on the road, this is a rental property. They stoned it, there's, uh, at any given time, there's three, four cars parked over here, the same over here. If you satellite map it, there's four or five cars parked here, so rental properties, this is what you get when you don't have enough room to park. And I would argue that for them, it would make sense for them to go in and out of their driveway with a double wide driveway. I mean, this is twenty twenty-five, not seventy-five years ago, and I'm, you know, I'm not, this.
I don't think.
Their driveway would go right up to my property and I'm in full support of it, so.
Yeah, guys, they have a uniform driveway.
Right here, come right, right, come, come right to.
Why aren't you doing the turnaround, that's our, the variance would be for a different turnaround than what the code says, right? The code says the turnaround's twelve by eighteen. They want to turn around, that's different because their property is different and doesn't allow for the twelve by eighteen. So that's gonna be on the side, and then they need a variance to be a foot or whatever they are from the neighbor. If you do those two variances. Think you're done?
Yeah.
There's nothing on this side of the street that affects anybody's view, these are all pre-lined, there's no driveways on this side of the street, we're one sided.
I think you're winning.
Yeah, yeah.
You're making something simple very complicated and.
I think you can.
Generally, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I think this portion right here could be done as a right. It, no, no, because it's too close to this board, so that was just one variance, this that we need to.
I think by just removing all of that and saying.
Just saying.
Turnaround area is this dimension, it is different from what the dimension in the code says, that's the variance.
It's one variance, that's two is the setback.
That turnaround's gonna bring them a foot away from the neighbor's property. The code says you can't be there, so they're gonna variance to be there and you have to neighbor.
Or just.
Two variance, yes.
Yeah, it can bring us six, six feet from the neighbor's property.
Seventy.
Yeah.
So, so just briefly, so I have this right? It's really. Not curb cut, it is going to be. It is going to be, but right now I have a curb.
The curb question, stop.
I'm just, give me one second here, one second. Where is, where?
I think, I think they're not, they're not.
Yes.
Where are their neighbors here? Located eight feet, so the number is eight feet, how far are they from their neighbor's house with this proposal?
Six.
So the variance is gonna be two feet. It, two feet or six feet, can probably lie.
Two feet.
So the variance is six feet.
No.
No. variance is two feet, it's six feet.
Okay, got it, got it. Variance of two feet.
Yes.
Locate the driveway slash turnout area. Six feet from the neighbor's property line, is that correct?
Correct.
I think you should call it a parking area.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll say driveway slash parking area, cause it's kind of its neighbor.
No.
It's a parking area. If you do driveway, they mean it's running on six, we want parking area, cause that's six and seven.
Motion be granting area that's two feet to locate the parking area of six feet from the neighbor's property.
Is it parking or is it?
Improved one, improved. Improved parking.
I'm gonna say improved, okay.
Is seven.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've got one variance for, um, two feet for the property line, I've got another variant, I'm just putting the dimensions, variance improved parking area of six point eight by thirty-five. Where the code allows for a parking area of all by eighteen.
It's, it's six feet eight inches, not, it's two inches difference, but it's.
Six feet eight.
Inches, or six point six seven feet.
No, that's, that's a good distinction, six feet eight inches by thirty-five feet.
Yep.
Okay. Is there a motion on the first variance?
I'll make a motion right.
Second. Motion made by Kelly, second made by, was that Josh or Max? Max? Josh.
Josh.
Uh, motion by Kelly, second by Josh, you grant an area variance of two feet to locate the improved. Uh, motion by Kelly, second by Josh. You grant an area of variance of two feet to locate the improved parking area, six feet from the neighbor's property line on which side of the house?
The, uh.
It's the west.
West, I said western.
Yeah.
West side of the principal structure. Sorry.
Is it?
No, I think it's.
No, so it's not, right?
Yes, north arrow is down.
East, east would be this way. It would, that's north.
No, north arrow, right, north is, goes west in the bottom of the page.
North is this way.
Yeah.
Ever east, south, warm. So east is that way, west is that way.
It's, it's not.
No?
North is that, bro. North is.
It's right up in the top left.
Yeah, you're not orienting.
That's north.
Just click that, it's western. Click that and it might orient you north.
North is that way. It's pointing north. The red arrow is pointing north.
Right, the west is.
Western.
West is that.
We're, we're, we don't.
So it's on the west side of the principal structure, is that right?
This is correct.
First case. Uh, motion by Kelly, second by Josh. You grant an area of variance of two feet to locate the improved parking area of six feet from the neighbor's property line on the west side of the principal structure.
Their survey is wrong then.
Yeah, that's why I was confused.
That's crazy. Yeah, their north arrow is pointing south.
Okay.
In any event, is that the correct? Direction? Okay.
Yeah.
Let's go through the criteria. Is there numbers adorable change produced in the character of the neighborhood or detrimental to what our property's created by granting the variance for the neighbor's property line?
Six feet, another earth. Two, fourteen areas on the same street.
Is there some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance?
Yeah.
Is the requested variance substantial?
Yes.
Quarter of the distance. So, what is the proposed variance having average effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood district?
Yeah.
No.
It doesn't create.
Is your last difficulty self created?
Yeah.
Yes, everyone else agrees. Okay, motion by Kelly, second by Josh. You create a variance of two feet. Locate the improved parking area of six feet from the neighbor's property line on the west side of the principal structure. Um, call for a vote. Member Delaposto?
Yes.
Member Herron?
No.
Member Trevette?
Yes.
Member Warbeck?
Yes.
Uh, Vice Chair Corntown?
Yes.
Chairperson O'Connor?
Yes.
Okay, first variance passes five to one. Now, the second variance is the improved parking area, six feet, eight inches by thirty-five feet. Is there a motion?
Yes.
Motion by Kelly to approve.
Second.
Second by Josh. Motion by Kelly, second by Josh. You grant an area variance to allow for an improved parking area of six. Feet, eight inches by thirty-five feet. Where the town code allows for an improved parking area of twelve by eighteen.
So. Spoiler, I'm gonna go no for this one anyway, but I don't think that that should be the dimensions of the turnout area. So. If you add that square footage. What did you say? Just say Matt?
Six feet, eight inches by thirty-five feet.
Six. Times. It's gonna be a little.
Thinking about it right now. I calculated it using six point eight on my calculator. So you're gonna be.
It's gonna be, that would be bigger than what? Again, I'm, I'm, I'm against this for precedent only anyway, so I'm gonna go no, but I think that if you. For the sake of this, if you do it by total area of improved. Which wouldn't include the grassy area, you're basically saying it's the total length as a rectangle. I'm saying you could subtract.
Proagate it a little bit more.
Try, subtract the area of the triangle that will not be improved.
Are we the squiggly line?
So it would essentially be, it would essentially be a rectangle. Plus a triangle.
Right.
For a total area of a hundred and eighty-three square feet, which is less, I think it's a better case for the board. Because it's ultimately less than what the code does allow.
Giving the variance because the dimensions are different. It's a variance on it because they're specific. It's weird to give a variance upon dimensions because anytime you get them different, it's gonna be a variance. But to me, square footage makes sense. It's less than, less square footage, they're taking less of an area that the code's allowing.
Exactly. And yeah, so, so you, someone can check my math.
We can just, can't we just cite that as part of the criteria while we're accepting it?
As indicated in the drawings.
Yeah, that's the.
That's fine too.
Maybe, maybe, maybe is a different way of handling it.
What are you proposing?
You know, when we go through the criteria, we can cite that as sort of the criteria that supports like a decision.
Okay.
The staff.
I'm gonna leave the motion to debate.
Yeah, I'm gonna insist we put squiggly line in the record. Well, no, because when you go back and look at this in two years and the area is, that's actually not really what we approved.
Right, right. I see, I see what you're saying. It should be. It, it should be accurate.
It should, yeah, better reflects what we're actually approving.
We'll be able to understand in two years why we did this.
Well, I'll be here.
Oh boy.
I'll be here.
Okay, we got a motion by Kelly, second by Josh. Grant an area of variance to allow for an improved parking area of six feet, eight inches by thirty-five feet where the code allows for a parking area of twelve by eighteen feet. Go through the criteria.
With the understanding that portion of it.
Yes.
You understand that portion of it is not gonna be.
I think that's the criteria that we.
Yes, only viewed as a. Way to access.
Your condition?
No, well, why?
Yeah. Right?
It's the whole of the six point eight feet by thirty-five feet does not paint. There's a fraud that is provided for.
Provided a portion of the area not be painted.
Great.
Yeah.
With the condition that portion, is there a size of that portion?
It is.
Was it under the, what was that, thirty?
And we're, we're.
Fifteen.
Proving a parking area up to an area where part of it is parking.
I just think you're thinking too deeply, too, too much into it.
No, I don't know why we wouldn't just say.
A hundred and two square feet that's not of, of, of the rectangle that is not paved.
Right, fifteen feet. Fifteen feet is not gonna be.
A portion of the parking of fifteen square feet?
No, fifteen feet from. Twenty feet from the house will be paid. After that portion of the next fifteen feet will only wash the. Does that make sense?
Half of that rectangular.
Can we?
No.
Back up a lot.
No, it doesn't make sense. No.
I think we need to, I think we're making it really complicated.
I know.
And I.
I don't know why we can't say the variance is six feet, eight inches by thirty-five feet.
Because only a portion of the thirty-five feet is gonna be.
So not paid, then why are we counting it as part there?
That's what I'm saying, that's my point.
There's no count of part of the fate. That's the.
Are we saying as indicated in the, by instance, by the board? It's, it's this squiggly part that's not.
We're proving a, a part of the area that's a triangle and a rectangle. The total of square footage.
You're trying, you're trying to prove that. Really, we're proving this plus this, right?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, you're trying to prove the rectangle on the dealer. It's this plus the.
Trying to.
You're trying to prove rectangle.
This shake. This is an improved parking area.
Right, so that, exactly, then it's not six point three, six feet eight inches by thirty-five, smaller than that.
It's okay, but it's technically smaller. I would just cite the drawings. Type of class.
Right.
So this is, yeah, you need a rectangle.
Probably be easier to.
And also.
But I mean, like, quite, uh.
Strong.
To, to do it as you, it's written, it's like, we're granting a variance for a parking area of this size, but part of it's not parked. It doesn't, we're like. Negating ourselves. Why not just say? Of an area of. A hundred and.
That's, we mentioned eighty area to have.
Eighty-three square feet.
It's taped?
Yes.
Yes.
With the condition that.
Per the drawings, a hundred and eighty-three square feet is painted.
Or just, or just reference the drawings either way.
I think you reference the drawings. I think that's a goal.
That way you're not.
The, as it is and say.
Just reference the drawing. It's part of the record, so be done with it.
Payments application provided for drawings in conformance with the size.
And insurance to be drawn submitted by the app can.
Yes.
Okay.
Reference.
I mean, we do one draw, but never in the afternoon.
Yeah, we gotta.
Performance to the draw submitted sides.
Do this every.
And area variance for, allow for an improved parking area of six feet, eight inches by thirty-five feet where the code allows for an improved parking area of twelve feet by eighteen feet. Inconformance with the drawings submitted by the app can.
Which must be in conformance, which shall be in conformance.
If I do this into the full answer.
Yeah. Well, cause we're trying to say it has to be, right?
Which shall be in conformance with the drawings.
And, oh, right, so, yeah.
Okay. Motion by Kelly, second by Josh. Let's talk about the criteria. So non-desirable change produced in the neighborhood reception near that property's created by granting the parking area.
No, it's consistent.
Some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance.
No.
Is requested variance substantial?
Yes.
With adverse effect on tactical, physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood district. So why difficulty self create it?
Yes.
Motion by Kelly, second by Josh. Call for a vote. Member Delaposto?
Yes.
Member Herron?
No.
Member Trevette? Warbeck?
Yes.
Vice Chair Corntown?
Yes.
Chairperson O'Connor?
Yes.
Passes five to one. Congratulations, guys.
We'll see you guys in town.
See you guys next month.
We promise we'll try not to make this.
What we do.
Thanks for working with us. These things get really complicated. They can.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, though.
Don't worry about the rest of the schedule.
Okay. Um. This side.
Got. Bergenfield next.
Yes.
Five one oh nine Bergenfield?
Yeah.
Anybody here interested in this case that's not the other guy? Do you waive reading of the notice?
What's that?
Do you waive reading of the notice?
Are you here for this one? I'm gonna help him if he needs help.
Okay, buddy. I'm gonna read the notice.
Just, yeah, yeah, just we need to read a notice.
Notice is hereby given pursuant to section two sixty-seven A of the New York State Town Law that a public hearing will be held by the zoning board of appeals of the town of DeWitt. New York at the town offices, fifty-four hundred Butterman Drive, East Service, New York. Monday, September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, six forty P M to consider the application. How do I spell it? How do I say your name?
Iklovipendjali.
Iklovipendjali, received by the DeWitt Town clerk on August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, concerning the premises situated at five one oh nine Bergenfield Way. Tax map parcel ID zero seven seven dot dash two four dash one two dot zero. In a residential zero zoning district, specifically requested by the applicant is an area variance of fifteen feet to locate a detached accessory structure. Garage in the side yard where the DeWitt Town Code, section one ninety-two dash nine eight A. States that no detached accessory building or structure shall be constructed near the front property line and the rear of the main building. And for such additional relief as may be necessary or appropriate, notice on September fourth, two thousand twenty-five. Pull up your application and see if you can through it. One second. But. Imagine you want your survey up here, sir. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Before you get started. Town is declaring lead agency per purposes seeker type two action for an arrogance for a single family, two family or three family residents. There are no negative environment, so one pack associated with the post action. Okay, go on.
So um. This is my driveway that goes up, uh, that's the main dwelling. Uh, this is where we plan on putting a garage, which is about twenty-two feet away from our. Um, you know, our property line here and about thirty feet from here. Uh, this was all a, a big hill before. So I took a permit last year to remove some of this part of the hill. So I can, you know, build something for my daughter, you know, a little, little extension of the lawn that we had. Um, while we were doing this, we felt that there was a need for us to have a garage. Although the drawings would tell you it is a three car garage, it is really not a three car garage. It's only a two car garage. Right? So in the winter, it becomes very, very challenging for us to, uh, you know, drive up and down. Um, in the snow and cleaning up in the morning. So we thought of an idea of just putting a detached garage over here. Um, so what you see over here, uh, on, on the south side, over here, this is all big hill. Uh, if you go back into the property, this is all hill. Everything is enclosed basically within this. Now, the problem uh that I was coming across is that when we. When we talk to the contractors, you know, going and uh taking out such a big hill, uh, twenty feet back would be just. Uh, you know, a lot of work and a, a lot of loads and then we have to take permits to put the uh load elsewhere. We have to find the places. It becomes really, very, very expensive for us. So, uh, and plus it would push the property uh so far back right now. This is my garage entrance right about here. This is my garage entrance. So we were thinking that if we have something right where uh we used to have the hill. This used to be a stone wall, like retaining stone wall before, right here. So we dug into it and we graded this whole area. So uh, uh, pushing it further back would just mean. Too much of work, again, new engineering, drawing, doing all those things. So I'm asking for a variance of only about, I think, sixteen feet, sorry, fourteen feet. Because the town told me that I have my, the front part of my garage here should be in line with this here. Uh, with my property line back here. So I just told.
Realign of the home.
Yes, that is correct, yes. So, um, what this suggested to be the, the, the code inspector suggested to me that why don't I ask for variance before spending? You know, a fortune over here, just trying to take the, you know, the hill away and kind of accommodate something. So that's what I'm here for. And I think the Google pictures may not show too much because we have only graded the sound. Yeah, so.
So no street view over there, yeah. Based on the amount of trees in your backyard, it looks like the, the structure is not really visible from your neighbor.
No, it's not.
Fifty-one oh one?
No.
I didn't think so.
No, it, it is not visible to anybody from anywhere. Other than if when you're, when you're sitting on the street, it's a, it's a big driveway that goes up high. And then probably you can see if it was built, you could probably just see half, half the build. There you go. I'll look at the picture when I need. Oh, your house is, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a house, yeah. So this is where we are asking. So you see, this is the area that we, we have created that little opening. So this is still a hill. Everything back here is also.
Yes, all going up, up.
It's all. Yeah, it's all enclosed. So we are not building it over here just so that we are doing it right here. This area, right?
When that cut out is.
Yes, yes.
A perpendicular around, parallel with the house.
Yes, yes.
Are there any other detached garages in the neighborhood?
There are several, yes.
Detached?
Yes.
I can't find any.
No, I, I think attached, sorry, detached.
Right.
I'm not.
There's a lot of, a lot of facing garages in the neighborhood, but they're not detached yet.
Yes, so my, my, my neighbor who's right in front of me. He has a detached garage, but he has a small hall, hallway going through that attaches to the other garages.
Yeah.
Yes.
One of the things we're supposed to ask about is if there are al, are alternatives.
Pardon me?
If there are alternatives to what you proposed.
Alternatives, the only alternative that was given to me by the uh code inspector was to create a walkway going from the garage. And attached to the dwelling. And I said, that's great, but what if I have to service a pool? This is my only entrance to go into the backyard. If something went wrong, if a pipeline goes down or something happened, some construction has to be done. This is the only way to go into my property. I don't have a way to go from the back here. So I want to leave that open. That was the only reason. And if we move the garage more towards the house, then still we will have to have to take this whole hill out to create a way for somebody to get back into the backyard.
You can't get back through here?
Yes.
Through this side?
So right now, we are about twenty feet.
It's a huge, yeah.
Big hill, yeah.
It's a huge, it's about thirty, forty feet high.
That house itself is on, on a hill looking down at that.
Yes.
So if you, if you, if you don't mind, I, I can show you some pictures that I just took. Yeah, so you can appreciate what, what a challenge it is for me to.
Have you, uh, considered what, uh, storm drainage or the positioning of the garage, the storm drainage might have occurred after you build a garage? And what it might give your neighbors and so forth in your property? I'm concerned about, uh, it being so close to the hill and it real, it, it impacting drainage off that hill. Uh, you know.
So we have a retaining wall already over there.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, I'm gonna show it to you.
I had a client who floated his pool because he changed them.
So. Not sure whom I can show this to, but, um, this is what we have right now. So we have a retaining wall over here, as you can see, and the hill is way up here. See, that's, it's a big hill. Um, you can probably see from here, this is how high the hill is. This is the height of my house. So even if I went to this height, which I will not probably, but, um, it is still covered with, um, you know, it is fully enclosed, as you can see, um, around with the hill. It is all enclosed.
Yes.
Yeah, it's all enclosed.
Mm-hmm.
In the hill. Right. So there is no neighbor that can, you know, I'm not interfering with anybody's view or not, you know, doing anything to anybody else, really. It's just to my own property. And I'm, I'm offering, making these alterations. So I mean, my only, I would have done the walkway that the code inspector had asked me to do. But like I told you, the challenge would be that I have to make some way for somebody to get back here. If we have, we, we are putting up a pool, uh, for my daughter there. So, you know, if somebody has come and serviced the pool, there has to be some way for them to get back there. And if we close that whole thing, then there will be no way to left there.
Good, I'm good. I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Max. Let's make it second by Dan. It's just to grant an area variance to allow for a detached accessory structure on, on garage on, uh, side yard.
Yeah.
Yeah, side yard.
Side yard?
Yeah.
On what side of the bill, on what side of the principal structure is it?
The left.
The south, the south side.
On the south side, the central structure.
Yeah.
Fifteen feet near the front property line and the rear of the main building. That's correct, fifteen feet?
I think so.
That's my solid survey.
No, near the back.
Fifteen feet front of the back. Back fifteen feet near the front property line than the rear of the main building. That's how the code puts it. It, it is more confusing than that.
Sorry, sorry.
Um, okay. Uh, let's go through any criteria. Could there be an undesirable change produced in the neighborhood or that's why it's an area property separated by granting variance?
No.
Some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance?
No.
This is an L D.
Turns of the.
Maybe not feasible? Required variance substantial?
Yes.
So an adverse effect to impact on a physical or environmental condition in the neighborhood, that's right.
It's ones that can understand. It's not an issue. We asked no question.
Well, the pool's not in yet. Yeah.
You're watching it, hope you self-created.
Yes.
Yeah. I got a motion made by Max, seconded by Dan to grant an area variance to allow for a detached accessory structure slash garage on the side yard on the south side of the principal structure, fifteen feet near the front property line and the rear of the main building. All for a vote, member Delaposta.
Yes.
Member Perrin.
Yes.
Member Trevette.
No.
Member Warbeck.
Yes.
Uh, Vice Chair Cornfeld.
Yes.
Chair personal Connor.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Pass is five one. Max.
Next is seven twenty-eight.
Seven twenty-eight Maple Drive.
Is there anyone here for Joseph?
Do you agree to waive reading of the notice?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I don't understand it anyways.
Well, just say that you listening to me for more than you already have to tonight. Uh, let me pull up your application and then get started. I do wanna say before you get started that the town declaring lead agency for the purposes of seekers, the type two action, an area variance for a single family, two family or three family residents. When you go into the environmental impacts associated with this application. And that's your application, but let me go. Survey. And I have one question for you before you get started.
True.
All I was looking at was confirming the number of seventy-six. I'm told that the front of this structure is going to be seventy-six feet from the back of the house line. Are these numbers telling me that?
Well, this is fifty-six. And that's, so it's fifty-six minus hundred and thirty-two. Yeah, about hundred thirty-two minus fifty-six.
Never had one of these before, now we have two in a row. Detached.
We had, we had one, one recently in Briar Cliff. We had one. Um.
This is so fun.
So the front of the dwelling faces what, uh, east?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And I sort of got screwed up because we bought the house about a year ago. We only moved in a month ago. And I brought the survey and since we bought the, uh, house because we have four family cars, nice two-car garage. And there's a ton of space here and I dropped it off here and they said, oh, you can put it just about anywhere. So I never looked into it until we decided to go ahead and do it. And it turns out that it really is hard to fit it. One of the reasons we bought the house is this backyard is absolutely spectacular and is all fenced in with a six-foot seater fence. We did not wanna go into there. Um, I drew this, which is a twenty-four by twenty-four foot garage thing. And that's, the, this will be, this is the front, okay? We have a real problem because we are on this Woodchuck Hill. It comes up a hill. We're right at the top of the hill. And you can't see anything. So getting in and out.
And also, this is all like a cliff.
Yeah, well, this, this is a cliff.
This is on the front part of Woodchuck. When you're going up the hill, you turn off Woodchuck onto Maple. That's where this is, you're going.
It's the first house on the left.
If you're on Woodchuck?
No, you turn onto, you turn onto Maple from Woodchuck.
On Maple, first house on the left.
Crossing the red house.
Yeah.
And this is all, this is all woods.
I drive by the, I think, there are a little wood.
Well, have you seen all the cars from there?
Yes, actually, I drove by it early, just.
It's, it's, uh, I mean, it's a good-sized two-car garage. We did take seven feet for the back of the garage and put a mudroom, mudroom in there. So we took some of the garage. But there's really no place to turn around.
That's a process.
And we've been backing out of that driveway and it's really terrifying sometimes.
This is all down, on a downhill slope right there?
Started down here from about here down, in our property comes, there, there are two telephone poles. Goes to the second telephone pole, which is probably about fifty feet from the end of, from Woodchuck.
This is right there on there.
I'm trying to do something sort of economical, um, and, and put this in so we can get cars out in the winter, get all the cars in the garages.
And also, buses come by, Jamie, so people have been coming to your house and they have to park on the side of the street, which is one lane each way. And, um, it's pretty good to listen to that, too.
So the, can you help us understand? So you're building this in addition to the existing detached garage you already had?
This is the, this is the attached garage right here.
So you're essentially gonna be able to pull into your driveway, you need to go straight into your detached garage or on a, kind of on a, on an angle.
Yeah, we wanted to.
And that's why it's oriented that way.
Yes.
Like to wear the fences?
Yeah, it's.
In front, in front of the fence, getting in front of it? So will the friends still be there? Yes.
Yes, this, this is the way you can get into the backyard through the fence.
Go into here and put it in, in here. Okay, yeah. Oh, okay, that's nice.
You wanna put it in here. Can't be over here.
No, because there's no one here. A guy owns the property right at the corner. It's supposedly it's wetland, so he's built nothing. It, it's down, it's in the gully. It's, it's past this. This is all a big, not a big, but it's a cliff. It's a long.
There's a cliff behind our fence, too.
My parents' house is down the other side of that.
Oh, it is?
Right, so he's to sneak up through there. Probably up that hill there.
I mean, I can, I can, I can't, couldn't take any pictures now because there's too many cars and stuff around there. It's a mess. But I can show, it, it's, it's in this, uh, area here. There's a bunch of photos of. It's, it's all wooded. We're planning on taking as few trees down as possible. And, uh, my wife will make sure it looks really nice.
It's gonna match.
We tried to, we tried to. We're, we're gonna do it more economically. We're gonna do it, we're gonna do shingles. Right now it has party shingles, which are sort of gray. The, the gentleman who I asked about building the garage, he explained and does just garages. He says there's tons of different colors of shingles. So that's right.
Yeah, we're, it's required to match.
That is conditioning.
Yeah.
It's required in my world, too.
Nice, it's a, it's a, it's a beautiful area. And I know it's, it's closer to the road and we need a variance to do it, but it's really, uh, important.
In the photos, it looks like it'll still be behind a few trees at least.
Well, they're gonna, there'll be a lot of trees in front of it.
Oh, they're, they're, these are all, all, this is all treated.
I did, yes. That's what I'm saying. It looks, it appears close in the survey, but it's going to be, um, shielded from the road because there are no trees there.
And I, I talked to the people all across the street and they used, he has, sometimes he has thirty cars packed in, out in his lawn.
Red house.
And he, but he has a turnaround too.
They called it the Kish in his house, I guess.
And I really didn't wanna cut into the, cut into the front lawn to put a turnaround. The turnaround doesn't protect the vehicles. We only need to protect the vehicles.
Can you just, um, speak again a little bit about the plusing? You mentioned there's almost like a safety concern. Can you just?
There, there is a safety.
Explain that again so you have clear.
We, uh, we chose some of the garage, so it's a little bit smaller, but our family has, we have four cars. So I'm concerned like if we can't put all four cars in the two garages, my paddle boards and our bikes, that when people come over, they, they have to pull up on the street to park. So.
In the bus, what about, what is the concern?
Well, there's, but, I mean, the buses come by in the morning, but in, in the afternoon, if there's cars on the street, it's, it, they're, they're actually on the street.
It's, it's, it's hairy there.
Yeah, there's no sidewalks, there's no parking.
There's also a utility pole here and a, and a, a sign for the stop sign. So, uh, being part of it, you, you know, it's, it goes, if you go past the house now and they're still working, it's, it's, it's dangerous. And I, I'm really nervous when I start to pull out the driveway. There's no way I can, if I didn't back, I can back into the driveway, but otherwise there's no way to turn.
Okay, so, I mean, I think that's part of it too, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I mean, I'm.
Just in terms of alternatives, you could connect the new garage to the house, right? And then it wouldn't be an accessory structure.
It's the same situation as that man has. There's that little driveway thing with the fence, the gate going to the backyard. So to get to anything back there, I don't know if we're gonna do a little cocktail.
If, if we did, it'd be sort of weird to do that because the, I mean, we could, we can, we can rotate this anyway. If you say, well, that's too close, you have to, we, we can move this. And I could also prefer not to, I could move it, I could do the twenty-two by twenty-two garage instead of a twenty-four by twenty-four. I mean, it's not set in stone. I'm just hoping to do something so we can get the cars out of the driveway. We usually, we have a lot of guests.
I mean, that's Maple.
It really, it really fills up.
There are the buses and. We had a little party at the house yesterday and, I mean, people parked outside, but I wanted them to go down. So I had them park on the streets, but that's even kind of dangerous.
Yeah, even opening the door.
Yeah, no.
Getting out.
Yeah, yeah.
It's really, we, we, we'll make it so that it's as invisible as possible. That's all I can tell you. And it will be safer. There's no question about that.
So what's the variance exactly? Is it?
I'm sorry.
She, uh, Sharon told me to make it the, the largest it would be. So that would be the difference between one thirty-two inches, the rear corner of the house. And this is the front corner of the garage. But this can be moved. We're just trying to cut down on the number of trees we have to take down.
Yeah.
And we don't wanna have a longer driveway. You don't wanna make the driveway so you, the ingress and the egress is okay, but we don't want it to, you know, it can't, it can't, can't go this far without taking the fence down and going into our backyard.
Jamie, this, this document shows seventy-six feet. One thirty-two from the road down to the back of the house, minus the fifty-six from the road to the front of the, the front of the attached structure there. So I have seventy-six on my, on my built here. That's what the application says.
That's the variance.
That, that's the variance. The variance really is, uh, is locating the detached accessory structure near to the front than the back house line. That's the variance. We're saying seventy-six because we don't want them to put it next to the street. We're saying they can go as far up to this area, um, but no further. So I, I think you have to have the seventy-six in there. Um, if that's the best for the applicant, you know, if, if the boards aren't really telling you that one, is, is that what you want? We can give, it's something that works for you.
There are, we, we can, that's what I prefer to ask for, so we can do it there if we wanted to, but we, we can move it. It's not, uh, again, there's a big dumpster. It's hard to get around right now, but all that stuff will be.
Cutting into rock.
Yeah.
So if I may ask, based on your photos, is it going to, is the new structure going to be uh, sort of infringe upon the drive to the back or is it to, to the left in, into the, the current vegetation or is it a little bit of both?
It's gonna go right, it's gonna, it's gonna start right at the, at the line and go right into the vegetation. It's gonna, yeah, it's, it's gonna, you know, you'll, it'll be here, here. So the, the, we're gonna make this.
Use the seventy-six number, but don't use the one thirty-two and fifty-six, because those are better.
Yeah, yeah.
Remember story?
Yeah, because even if you take them back the same.
Seventy-six feet from here from the back of the house.
So I just wanna kind of circle back to the safety thing. I'm not opposed to this. I just think we should talk about that because I'm not sure that really, how far we're stretching the safety component. So I understand the street's busy. I'm just saying about what the solution that you're, um, is truly for safety.
Yeah.
If you were to pull into your garage.
Yes.
That's attached as now.
Correct.
You, in order to get to the street, you have to back all the way out onto the street.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
But with that garage in that position, are you realistically going to be able to pull out of the attached garage, swing all the way around and then pull forward on? You would?
Well, again, depending on, on how, how this is rotated. You know, and whoever's gonna do the excavation for me, we, we, we would talk about that, be, make sure that's.
Back out a half moon and lead it.
But also, part of it is that they would be able to park other cars that they own in a designated location. So cars coming to visit have driveway, presumably instead of street.
It's not parked on the street. Right, but that, that would justify it, like, you know, approved parking. I don't know if that necessarily directly justifies a garage being where the code says it can be.
Agree, but that's what he's asking.
No, I, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not opposed to it. I'm just saying that like from a safety thing.
It's not tied to the accessory structure necessarily.
Yeah, but we, I mean, we've addressed individual safety concerns on driveway issues.
I mean, we could, we, we could attach it, but it's a lot more expensive because it would be hard to make that look really good.
Yeah, you know, you can't get out of the backyard. You need to get back there. You need to get in the backyard.
Not my first thought. That's, that's odd to have a, just makes the whole structure weird if you got the attachment.
If you attach, yeah, I agree.
There's a, there's a, there's a, uh, house on Woodchuck where they've done that. If you look at the, it's just past, if you're heading, um, west on Woodchuck, just past Old Quarry.
Yeah.
There's a house that has a, a, an attached, sort of an attached garage, but it looks like it's attached by a fence or a walkway.
Yeah.
And the, the main garage faces the way our main garage does, and their attached garage is listed. And they just have sort of a walkway that goes, I, I think it probably is considered to be attached on the housing.
Yeah.
But it, it looks too funny. If you put it just another drive, first of all, you, you knock this out and it just looks too weird. They have a long, you know, four-car garage in the house. I think it would detract from the appearance of that.
Right, so how do we frame this?
I just think it's, I think you say, you have an area variance to allow for a detached accessory structure garage. Front yard, right?
Yes, for you.
Front yard of the main building, seventy-six feet near to the front property line and the rear of the main building. And you could have a condition that the building is about more than twenty-four by twenty-four and that it matches the main home.
I'm making motion to approve that.
It's nice, ninety-four by twenty-four. And the, um, what do you call it? What's matching?
The shingles.
Siding, siding. Siding.
Siding shingles features, okay.
Yeah. It's clavash.
Does not exceed, kind of siding, shingles, features, um, match the main building.
Yeah, I had to take a call. Yeah.
I, um, is there a motion?
I need a motion.
Motion by Kelly, second.
Second.
Second by Joe, to grant an area variance to allow for a detached accessory structure. Garage in the front yard of the main building, seventy-six feet near the front property line in the rear of the main building. With conditions that the size does not exceed twenty-four by twenty-four feet, and the siding slash shingles slash features match the main building. Let's go through the criteria, is there an undesirable change produced in the care to the neighborhood or detriment to any of our properties created by granting the variance?
No, we don't appreciate safety.
Safety concerns, yeah. Is there some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other invariance, attaching it?
Yeah.
Yes, but it prevents access to backyard.
Thank you.
And other areas that people may need to access.
Just not practical.
Well, and I think if we're saying it's for safety, you could say that. Uh, just a parking area would satisfy that requirement. They don't wanna park here, they want a garage, I'm not opposed to, I'm just saying that. If we're gonna cite safety as an issue, their ability to cater to get out of the driveway, they don't need a garage to.
Saying they don't need a garage, they could do a parking area, that's another feasible option.
Yeah.
Yes.
So by that, we get, we get, uh, an extra two parking spots with the, in the garage. We have a bunch of people, we have a bunch of people over a lot.
So request a very substantial?
Yes.
Yes.
Seventy-sixty.
Substantial. Will there be an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the new district?
No.
I think we should mention somewhere, mention somewhere too, that, that topography, I think, plays a big part of why I think this will aesthetically look good in that. When you're coming up Maple from, um.
Woodchuck.
You won't even see this structure.
Yeah, you don't.
You won't see it.
Correct.
So I can't see my driveway until I'm almost right there.
No, that's.
Which is why it's a dangerous.
That's privacy.
When I drive a car pool on that street, I'm always like, oh my gosh, what?
The, the backyard is incredible, it's supposed to mean if, if you've never spotted the backyard there, we, it was incredible.
It's not a positive effect, really.
It is, I think so. Yeah.
I think that, the, the fact that it's a wooded area and the, you know, the hilly topography contribute.
Help, help, go in their favor.
Yes, yeah, it'd be a very different story if this were on a, you know, typical block in any of our neighborhoods. Where they wouldn't put like a garage.
There's no room.
Yeah.
Well, actually, I could probably.
Do you want to look at all these self-creating?
Yes.
Yes.
I've got a motion by Kelly, second by Joey, grant the area variance to allow for the attached structure in the front yard of the main building, seventy-six feet near to the front property line in the rear of the main building. Conditions that the size does not exceed twenty-four feet by twenty-four feet, and the siding and shingles. Match the main building. Help for a vote, member Delaposa?
Yes.
Member Aaron?
Yes.
Member Truett?
No.
Member Warbeck? Step bell. By Chair Portbell, yes. Chairperson O'Connor?
Yes.
Passes you the way.
His daughter.
Did he leave?
Did he?
He's coming back.
Yeah, he's probably somewhere.
Something's on the phone.
Yeah.
Have a great night, guys. Thanks for your patience. Mister and Mrs Butler.
Yes, sir.
Last but not the last, second to last.
Thank you, yeah.
Thanks.
Is there anyone here?
You were ready to read.
We, we, we.
Making time.
We're done.
We're going to your, uh, application, you can explain what's going on. You want the survey, I guess.
Yeah, that's, because I think it shows the uniqueness of our property.
Yes.
And, and we're not talking about driveways here. This is really crazy.
As you can see, the address, the Bittersweet Lane, in the front of our house is Bittersweet Lane. But the back of our lot is Maple, same Maple we were just talking about. And even though.
It's all your lot, all the way here.
Yes, so we are trying to put in a cedar fence, um, all the way around, and because this fronts Maple. We have to ask for a variance from what we've been told, to go from a four-foot to a six-foot fence. Even though it's our backyard, it's the front of Maple.
You have two front yards.
And that's a separate parcel, right, where it says lot one?
Yes, divided by, um, I'm not sure which board. I, for any of you familiar with the house, it was empty for seven years before we bought it. Um, and there is all sorts of, like, drama, and it was divided by.
The bank.
The bank to put a lien on it, all in the past, we bought it eleven years ago, we've been working on the whole property ever since. It's been a labor of love, um, and so. The cedar fence, a lot of this is wooded, and I have, I submitted some letters from neighbors, they were, they're fine with this. I have another, I had an email too, from another neighbor.
Do you wanna send that in, you're welcome to.
Okay, um, and so this is back of our house. And the fence would start here, though we're not actually putting front variance as, or side variance. Um, and kind of go, we're not gonna go all the way to the edge in respect for. Our neighbors and just how, it would just be like a funny looking fence all the way here, more like this. The stream is not quite as lively as it looks, so you could actually put a fence over it. Like a fence panel over it without disrupting it at all. It's like crick, like weeds in it is more. We try to make it this best we can, we put rock in it, like that, and then, could you slide, uh, um, do you mind?
I'm not at all.
Okay, so then it would just go through here, you know, and staying within this, I believe it's the six feet is the. Um, and we have already talked to our friends, people, we would be putting in a very large gate. So that the town can access there right away, so we were, we're, we're putting in that gate, so for whatever reason, because.
To Neesman.
To Neesman, yes, because it's around the runoffs there, we have a walk, the stream goes into a waterfall, and it goes into a catch basin.
That's a drainage unit?
Yeah.
Yes, and so we're gonna put in.
There'll be two eight-foot gates.
So that any equipment that would ever need to get in there, go it.
Mm-hmm.
Easily, um.
There's a row of trees there now, we would be behind those trees, so.
I took a picture on my phone, if you wanna see that side, right? There are other people, and you guys, you're probably all familiar with Maple. You know, there are, there are other six-feet bushes, six-feet fence all along this kind of area, just for safety and privacy. For me, if you wanna see the picture, let's, we've tried to grow bushes, and we haven't had much success, or trees with, with the deer.
You're not speaking to my question, that's what I was gonna ask.
Yeah, no, I, I can show you, I can show you.
I believe you, that's what I was gonna ask, because you can avoid the whole fence issue if you're putting in shrubs.
So just like.
No, no, but we don't have to have the whole.
Warriors.
Be where you go.
So, one of your most, yeah, is me standing on our patio, that's made, that's house across the street.
Yeah.
So, I don't know if anyone wants.
I see.
Yes, absolutely, you can see us, our efforts.
Okay.
And who, who said that?
I lost the entries.
Yeah, photos.
That's from Maple.
So actually, I did, so this is us standing on our back patio, it's a pinehouse, and there's the aforementioned stream. And then you go all the way across, and this is a hill, and then we tried to plant stuff there.
Here, oh, it's been chewed on by.
Oh, and I see over.
Can't make it grow.
No, we've tried, you see, like, and then we, like, there was crazy, when we bought this lot, if, I don't know if anyone remembers, I mean, this was all swab and overgrown and crazy. We pruned it all down, we still get some of these crazy bushes keep trying to go back and hunt guys, and they're not attractive, we keep trying to kill them, um.
So the fence would be in place of that?
So it's, it's partly, I would, yeah, but, um. And it also serves as, you know, we have fully registered dogs, and also, they, you know, makes the yard safer for everybody.
Is there a fence around the pool?
Yes, um, the pool is to the side, and it is not a side structure, we made sure of it. And then there's a, so, this is where I think, so what would happen is this fence would end. Here.
Sure.
So like lining up with the shed that was actually the original garage from nineteen forty, would line up here. So that this area would be contained, like I said, we're very much, just like the, the last couple. We very much wanted to go with the lot, maintain the character, we love our home, we love our neighborhood, we wanna continue to improve it on it. Um, so this.
How long is the whole fence?
I got the, it's, it was.
Long.
Looks long.
It's a lot.
It's a lot, and I had, I have, I have the information for.
Oh, twenty grand long.
I have the.
I'm just gonna echo Alana's question, I overheard there, as part of being in the easement.
We can butt up to it and butt across it, that doesn't.
Yeah, Rocco, I, I would just call Rocco and just, and just talk to him, he's probably gonna be okay with it, but if something happens there and he runs up there, there's a fence. He's gonna say, what the heck?
Yeah, I think.
So I would call and just, just make sure that's okay with him.
I would.
Basically, we don't allow, we don't allow anything in, in some easements, because if we have to go on and destroy whatever's there, we have a problem.
Like I said, we can butt up to it and go across to it.
Because there may be a condition by the board that says that fence can't go in the easement, uh, would be what I recommend to the, to the board. If the board approves something that's not okay with highway department.
Or you position it on the highway department.
We, I would say they should have to approve it, right?
Condition on highway.
Actually.
Yeah. Okay.
So.
I don't know who the numbers crack guy, I have like the, all the numbers, somebody.
What material is the fence?
Uh, red cedar.
And Derek's looked at this, right, Derek's, so, the only thing that, everything else is fine, as far as Derek's concerned, all we're talking about is.
The height.
Four feet to sixty.
And if, and if it were a backyard, it would be fine, the only problem is the unique nature of this property, it goes on the maple, so it suddenly becomes a front yard.
Because, so it was originally two lots?
No.
It never was.
It never was, and actually, if you look at the tax ID numbers, they're both three Bittersweet Lane, and, um.
So what's, what's that line going across?
Now it's two lines.
It's, at some point, the bank was able to get it, and I'm not sure, a board or committee, but it doesn't matter, that's.
The bank subdivided it.
Subdivided it.
They sold, they were in the foreclosure, they were able to sell this lot with no liens. They left this in the prior owner's name, in case there was any other liens that were gonna follow them. Um, and would come back and haunt this lot, and this lot was cleared.
And then she Googled us and called me one day out of the blue and said, I don't want that, I live in Florida. And I haven't, I divorced my husband ten years ago, and I don't want anything to do with it, so.
And she gave us the.
Yeah, she gave us that piece. So, this, this, this house is full of stories, I'll tell you that.
Okay.
Um, and just talking about topography, I don't know if you could tell, because it was just a cell phone photo, this is a hill. Just going down towards the catch basin in the pelvert, and there's, there was a literally a three-tier waterfall.
Point out the right away, so I understand where it is.
It's right here, it's the stream.
Okay, that's it, okay.
It's the town, I'm not, which used to go into like a, they tried to make a man-made swamp.
Yeah, it was like shrubs.
And we took that.
Yeah.
Out, it was like overgrown, we put a nice stream in through there, so it's, it's pretty.
Yes.
I think we could make it a motion.
Okay.
So, okay, we got kind of one more question first, so is it, is it for privacy, or is it for the dog? Type like, what's, what's the main driver you're, here for you to want to do the fence?
Both, you know, if we're sitting out in our backyard, we don't like to see all those cars going down Maple. You know, and if our dogs are out, you know, we got a little bichon that can jump four-foot fence. She's like a.
Yeah, it's the weirdest thing you've ever seen in your, in the world, and she will.
She gets a running.
We have a patio with a four, with a four-foot wall around it, doesn't, and, um. So I would say all of the above, and also to make, to enhance the property overall. Um, and so that, we're also hoping that the things that we have planted that are being eaten, by fencing it in, the deer can't eat them.
You keep that.
Yeah, and then we can, like, continue trying to make these trees grow and look beautiful, and, you know, add to the property, add to the neighborhood.
You said, so can you, can you say again who you got feedback from? You, you neighbors sort of know which, which, um, owners?
I have it right here. Um.
That's Casey's.
Casey's, and the green one down over here, that was the note you saw, and I had a copy of an email that was in our file, but maybe it didn't make it to this, which is why I had, I could. Give it to you again, because the, um, I'm sorry, maybe scroll again, do you mind scrolling again?
But their neighbor's on Bittersweet.
No, the, the neighbor on Maple is the one that you had a letter from in your file? Yeah.
Is there any neighbors across the street?
Well, so that's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking about, I would want the fence too, I'm, I'm just, it does improve your, your lot, but ultimately, if you're driving down Maple. You see everyone's front yard, and then there's a long stretch of six-foot fence, pretty close to the road.
Um, could I answer that?
If.
If you, if you're right, there are absolutely some lots on it, including my sister's, who's down the street on Maple. That it's, you know, house frontage, but there are also long parts of Maple that are six-foot high fence or six-foot high bush. Because of, as you all know, you know, that, as Maple gets used more and more and more, people have had privacy and safety concerns. Um.
And actually, if you go up Bittersweet, there's a new fence up there, it's white vinyl, it's six-foot.
Yeah.
Same thing.
Yeah, on the, on the corner of Clara.
Up on Maple.
Not, not Clara.
Yeah, by Clara.
By Clara. Um.
Okay.
So it, it's not necessarily normal, but not abnormal on that road. Just I guess to, to, to be completely honest.
And that white vinyl fence would hit their side yard.
Yeah, because they're on a corner. So, and then the house next to it is one of those very old houses, like the last couple, it was very close to the road, it's a gorgeous house, but they put a fence there, they don't blame them. And, um, when we bought this house, our kids were young, and for years I was worried about it, for years, we were like, let's try to grow, let's try to. Property to them, okay?
Let them go.
All right.
They're gonna, they're gonna have a four-foot fence there, yeah, I'm looking at a four-foot fence, or you're gonna be looking at a six-foot fence, I'm not sure. Drive by, I'm not, I'm not checking that out, I'm, that's. It's not, it's kind of consequential.
And I assume there's a step back for the fence?
Six inches up the property line.
I don't think, I think the only issue they have is the height, everything else, my understanding of the codes enforcement officers looked at it, and he said this is to code.
Is this the six-foot fence you're talking about? That one there?
I don't know, is that six-foot or four-foot?
Well, that's why, it's new.
No, I, I think that's, I think that one's point.
That one, it's brand new.
And those are for houses usually where there's a house right there, and the door is there, and it kind of make, you know, makes sense to have a four-foot. Um.
Yeah, I think this, this vinyl fence is, looks like it's four.
Yeah, I think, I, I agree.
And it's July of this recent.
But he's talking about, all right. I'm not sure where you are, Google Maps isn't more his thing, um.
I don't know, but we, I, we don't need to entertain my clutches, I. Well, we, um, if everyone's in favor or whatever, we can, I don't mean to hold this up. If I overlook the cross from it, I wouldn't be enthusiastic about it, but that's just me.
Is there water from the personal cabinet?
Yeah, verify with it.
Directly across the street.
That person?
Not that.
No.
Not that, um, we're talking about that little ranch?
Um, I'm not, I'm not sure what I'm talking about, but I, it sounded like no one from across.
Not directly across the street.
Yeah.
Um.
Four, uh, like four twelve, four ten, four oh eight, Maple.
No.
Those are all people who'd be directly, I can't imagine four ten would care, because they're a mile off the road, but.
They are very far.
Four twelve.
Um.
Four oh eight, they, they go from looking at, you know, trees and shrubs, to looking at a six-foot high.
Actually, only half of it is pretty trees and shrubs, and the other half are raggedy.
But they're going to be looking at a fence.
Four foot.
They're gonna have the four-foot fence, that's the difference.
Oh.
That's fair.
Hopefully, we can nurture the trees that are raggedy on the inside, and so they grow up tall and beautiful over the fence, you know, like above it. Kind of making a prettier sightline.
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion to go through six-foot tall fence.
Front yard.
Maple drive.
In the front yard, fronting Maple drive?
Yeah.
Second? Second, so Dan, motion by Jamie, second by Dan, a grant area variance, two feet. To allow for a six-foot high fence in the front yard, fronting Maple drive. Go through the criteria, whether there be an undesirable change produced in the care to the neighborhood or detriment to any of our properties created, and granting the variance.
No.
A four-foot fence isn't giving a great deal of field, so.
Yeah, build the aesthetics in the neighborhood.
It's somewhat consistent with other properties that went to.
Is there another method feasible for the applicant to pursue other invariance? Is there other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than a variance?
No.
Uh, they want six-foot fence?
No, because the deer.
So requesting variance substantial, we said there's, we said these are substantial before.
I think it's substantial.
You said the eight, you said the eight-foot one, what, for front yard?
I think.
We had the one on Woodchuck, we had the one on Woodchuck that we approved.
Yes.
But that was like a danger situation, but this is more, in my opinion, a lot, because it's six-foot fence in front of there.
The adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in your neighborhood?
No.
Yeah.
Make sure you add something might be easy.
Oh, yeah.
That's nearly variance with the condition that the fence is not located within the town.
Or complies.
And, and the gate's provided for access to these.
Yeah, maybe we should add that Rocco. I think.
You think you know, Jamie, what do you think?
Complies with. Instructions from the.
Fence applies.
Restrictions.
There's a, so, by any comment, they may, if they modify what we're saying.
Just say subject to.
The condition that the homeowner obtains highway department approval to locate the fence.
I think, yeah, just say subject to.
Homeowner obtains approval from the town of the way highway department. To locate. The fence within. Town's. Easement on the property. Uh, makes sense? Motion by Jamie, standing by Dan, a grant area variance, two feet to allow for a six-foot-high fence in the front yard, fronting Maple drive, with the condition that the homeowner obtains approval from the town to a highway department to locate the fence within the town's easement. Um, parcel.
That we gave, said he was part of it, or it's part of the permit, so.
Eight.
It's already on the permit, so. So we don't would need.
Uh, also. Okay, call for a vote, number Delaposa?
Yes.
Number Aaron?
No.
Uh, member Trivet? Member Warbeck, not here. Uh, by Jared Cornbell, yes, check myself, Connor. Passes four oh one, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
If we, if we go along with that too, for, for, for the sake of it. So, I would say they would appreciate.[1627.82]